We've called the meeting to order. And let me see, changes to the agenda? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to public comment. Is there any? Matt? Trevor Thomas, is that a public?
No.
Trevor is one of our newer members.
Oh, forgive me Trevor. I don't see your face, that's the problem. That's my excuse anyway. Alright, so now we go to approval of some minutes, I think. October nine. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't see the minutes in the packet. Did I just skip over it?
Uh, I think they, I might have forgotten them and they went online though. You can hold them until the next meeting.
Well, I don't, if other people have read them. People, has everyone read them or should we hold these until next month? I'm not gonna vote anyway.
I have read them.
I've skimmed.
Matt, did you read them? Trevor, did you read them?
It seems like maybe we should hold it, as silly as it sounds.
So, does someone want to motion to approve the minutes?
No, I was saying, I think maybe we should hold off.
Okay, alright, we'll hold off till next month then.
Yeah.
Reflect how complicated our. He sort of reflected how complicated the conversation was.
Alright, let's go to item five. Rebbie, I'll send it over to you for item five.
Okay, um, so I realized fifteen minutes ago that I forgot to include a memo in your packet. So I'm just gonna talk a bit about that memo.
I had a memo.
And that was for the, for this, for item six. For item five, though, uh, alright, so last meeting, we talked about breaking down this entire packet into smaller chunks to make it a lot more digestible. So I sifted through, picked out all the items that we've kind of come to consensus about. Um, and a couple other items that we could further discuss and tease out for today. Uh, but for the most part, all the items under item five are all items that we've been, we've discussed over the last six, seven months and have kind of come to a good place with them, I think. Uh, these items are the gentle infill allowances for existing structures. So this is related to Mike's request for allowing existing, all existing structures.
Don't keep bringing me up as a question of this, come on.
This is related to, um, the owner of twenty-six and thirty, East, West Allen Street. And their request to.
The anonymous owner, is that what you said?
Yes, to, uh.
Private citizen.
Private citizen.
Not a planning commission person, they're private citizens.
And, and to be clear, the request was to add residential uses.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so the, the text would allow for, um, single unit, two unit, triplexes, up to four units to be, um, built within existing, all existing structures within the C one district. Um, the, the triplexes and quadplexes would have to go through site plan review. And it would only apply to existing structures as of the date the regulations go into effect. And then alongside with that, revisions to accessory dwelling units. So this is the textual changes in order to better align our accessory dwelling units, uh, uh, standards with statute to capture all of the single unit dwellings in the city instead of just the ones in the residential district. Because all single unit dwellings in the city have, uh, the ability and the right per statute to have an accessory dwelling unit. Third point, allowances for ADU projects that are converting existing unfinished space into a dwelling. So this would allow for the conversion of attic spaces, basement space, garage spaces into a dwelling unit if there are no changes to the site being made. This was a follow-up to Sarah's comment from a couple months ago from the ADU workshop. Thinking about how do we make ADU conversions maybe easier, more equitable? Specifically in regards to properties that aren't gonna make any site changes. No changes to parking, no changes to impervious services, no changes to structures, nothing. It's all gonna be internal improvements. So this is one way that we could move that forward. So alongside all of that, the ability, the applicability and permitting process for planning developments. So this is, um, the clarification of when a subdivision, uh, when subdivision standards apply, when planning unit development standards apply. And alongside all of that, uh, the allowance for multiple principal structures of up to four units or four buildings, um, on a property, um, under site plan review. So it allows for a little bit more flexibility to break down massing, to allow for more gentle infill, without having to, to, uh, to go to build a duplex or a triplex. But it still has some, some controls in terms of access and circulation that is reviewed by the DRB before it can be approved. Clarification on the subdivision review process, uh, the DRB brought up some vague parts in the subdivision standards that needed some fine tuning and tweaking, um, so that has been included. And the last two requests are items that we haven't discussed yet, so signage allowance in the public district. There are no sign, sign allowances in the public district, uh, so you can't put up a new sign in any of our parks. So the, the language that, that's in front of you would allow for new signage to be put up in the public district. The signage matches, it's, it matches to an extent the C one district allowances, uh, in terms of size and, uh, and types of signage. And the last thing that I have that's completely new is the alignment of the definition of affordable housing with the standards in inclusionary zoning. So this is something that Jasmine brought up to me, that our inclusionary zoning, um, standards for affordability rates are different from what we set for priority housing. And I went to a conference a couple weeks ago, uh, specific, more, it's planning in general, but I think most of the sessions were on land use planning. And, um, a couple of people came up to me, uh, who work specifically for state housing agencies. And they were like, and, cause I presented on our priority housing, uh, uh, incentives. And they were like, why is it set at a hundred percent AMI? Why isn't it set to best standard, best practices of eighty percent and one-twenty? And I was like, well, our inclusionary housing is set at eighty and one-twenty, which is best practice. I'm not sure why this is set at a hundred. And I, I asked Mike about this and, and we're not entirely sure why it's set to a hundred, um, in general. So I think that in order to provide better guidance to applicants and to provide more standardization across the board with our zoning, uh, I would recommend, um, changing the priority housing incentives to, uh, be allowed only if rent is set at eighty percent, up to eighty percent AMI and, or up to a hundred and twenty-eight percent AMI, uh, for dwelling units for sale. So that, that draft language is now included in your, uh, in your materials. I'll turn it over to you, Mike, to guide this discussion.
Does anyone have any question? Let's start with the allowances of the gentle infill that the anonymous citizen requested. Any, any questions or comments about that? Matt and Trevor, if you have anything, either raise your hand or just jump in.
Is that on?
What's that?
Where, where are we looking at that in our?
I'm sorry, there's just too much information all at once.
That was, let's see where that was. You know what section that is?
It is section, um, two point four. So at the bottom of two point four, let me pull that up in a second.
It's at the bottom of this.
Oh, okay.
The table. Omni present table.
So, at the bottom of two point four. Yeah, it's tiny font that says, uh, no new structures are allowed to host single unit dwellings, two unit dwellings, and multi-unit dwellings. Only structures in existence on, insert the date that the regulations are in effect in, uh, in, in the central business district are allowed to, to host single unit dwellings, two unit dwellings, multi-unit dwellings, uh, with three to four dwellings.
What bullet point is that on that page?
Seven, but not number seven.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't print it in color, so I'm looking at it, if I was all crossed out.
No new structures are allowed to host single unit dwellings, two unit dwellings, new structures. So, okay, allowed to host, no new structures are allowed to host, that means allowed to build?
Are, um, allowed to have new spaces?
Yeah, okay. As opposed to the older existing structures?
Yes.
Why did we put just existing structures?
So we started with historic structures.
Yeah.
And, um, at the time, I think it was Christine, uh, thought that, why would we restrict it to just historic structures? Why wouldn't we capture all of the existing structures?
And then some of the historic structures are, you know, defined in our inventory. But then other buildings which are older, which aren't classified as historic.
Right.
People may want us, you know, work in those as well, change in those as well.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why if, for example, if a, if a house in the C one zone gets destroyed for whatever reason and you, you replace it with a new structure, is this saying you can't put up to four units in it? Even though you may, by the regulations, by?
Yes.
You can, you could, if you had a vacant lot, you could put four units on it?
No. So this would only apply to buildings and structures that have been in existence prior to whenever this goes into effect. So if a, if a building is destroyed and they want to rebuild, they wouldn't be able to rebuild just a house. Same with a vacant property, if there's a vacant, vacant lot, they wouldn't be able to build just a house. They'd have to build more than four units.
But, okay, I, I hear what you're saying. But if a single family home gets destroyed, they have a certain amount of time to replace it. If it's damaged by act of God, fire, I forget all the languages, but that's standard practice.
That is correct. Yeah.
We wrote that in at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
Look at demolitions, four point one.
I mean, I see it as a way for people to repurpose the buildings that they have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that it's, it's, um, you know, if somebody chooses to neglect their building so that they can then.
Right.
You know, take it down because it's uninhabitable.
I, we can include a caveat that cross-references section four point one B. So four point one B says, within six months of the, after the, uh, let's see, no, that's for demolitions. Um, four point A, timely reconstruction of damaged structures. I think there's a way to do a cross-reference. So that way, if there is a building or structure that is destroyed, you can do a one-to-one rebuild.
But it's, it's an act of God, right?
Yes, yes.
Somebody neglects the building, they get that way.
Yeah.
So what this is doing is, is, cause my initial request was just to allow one, two, three, and four unit residential in that zone. This is really saying, no, we're just gonna allow it in existing structures.
Yes.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
It's fine with me, I serve it. I agree with Mike's question, why limit it to existing structures, but I, I'm not gonna fight about it, I think. I'm fine with it as it is.
Me to neither. Don't fight about it. Okay, any other questions about that section?
So if you build at the C one, you can't build, like, housing essentially?
Uh, you, you can build housing if you have commercial on the first floor, right?
No, you can build housing at scale, so it has to be more than four units.
Okay, yeah. Or it could be commercial with?
Yeah, it could be mixed use, yeah.
That makes me feel better.
So, so you're thinking like mixed use, it's like ground floor commercial and like three units above, two units above?
But don't, don't they have to have at least five units?
Yes, yeah, I wasn't, is that what you're looking to allow?
I'm not, I was just, I was just responding to, to Trevor's question.
Okay.
Cause he said you can't build residential. He was asking if we can't build residential a lot.
Yeah, no, but, okay, gotcha. Jen has her hand up.
Yeah, who is it?
Hi everybody, this is Jen from the Commission of Belonging. Uh, I'm just asking a clarify question, cause this is new for me.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm hearing this thinking about if a building gets rebuilt, how many units? I'm wondering if there's any limitations to size of the structure.
So, it, I mean typically, for those types of situations, it would be a one-to-one rebuild. Um, I, the only limitation on size would be setbacks in height. We allow for a hundred percent lot coverage, um, so, so yeah, that would, we don't, that would be the only limitation on, on size if it's like a single unit or duplex.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else on this one?
Not on this one, but we skipped, um, the one right before it.
No, this is the first one, C one.
It's, um, this one, IX, that's the first one.
I'm sorry, I was looking at. Section five.
I'm looking here, I thought it was. And it was in the front of our packet too.
Oh, oh, that's, yeah, that's the definition.
Good catch, John.
Sorry, this, what John said?
What John said?
This part, that needs to be edited.
And it needs to be what?
The latter part, where it says multi-unit dwellings, needs to be edited to add, uh, with three or three to four dwellings.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Thanks.
Good catch, John.
It's IX, I'm bad with my Roman numerals.
Yeah, see, that's, that's not one. It's way back here. So the question was, I, I skipped the first thing in, uh, on the agenda that Abby has was article nine, which is the definition of affordable housing, I believe.
Yeah, and I think there's a typo because it says one thousand two hundred percent of the.
Uh, yeah, that's an extra zero. Okay.
On the memo you gave me, Rebbie, you had that as the last item to talk about, cause we hadn't talked about it yet.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so. So I'm gonna follow what Rebbie had, cause we'll get to it at the end.
We'll get to it at that, sure.
So then we've got revisions to accessory dwelling units. You wanna give us a little intro to that?
Yeah, sure, so the edits to this section is primarily technical in order to include single unit dwellings in the C one and Gateway districts. About twenty properties in the Gateway and C one districts are single unit dwellings. The way that our current regulations are written, it appears as though, uh, those property owners do not have the right to build an ADU, uh, but by statute they do. So the suggested change would, uh, clarify that allowance that, that they have per statute.
What page are we on?
Five point, let's start at five point one.
Five point?
Five point one?
Yes, yes.
You say five point one?
Yes.
Okay.
Article five, five point one, accessory dwelling units, right?
Yeah.
Quick, well, there's no quick question, I guess.
I only have high context answers.
We've, we've got under, um, I guess it's now B, do, 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 five, B one five, or B one E. Accessory dwelling unit does not exceed thirty percent of the average total habitable floor area of the existing dwelling units or nine hundred square feet. My question is, um, whichever is greater. So if I have, let's say, a three, three, one-bedroom apartments, and they're all nine hundred square feet, which is a good-sized one-bedroom apartment, I can put a accessory dwelling unit, nine hundred square feet, the same size as that?
Uh, it does not even.
According to this, it looks like you can. So it's really not an accessory dwelling unit, is it?
Yeah. He, he, yes. I, I, I'm not sure, uh, again, about the history of this, cause I know that this was, um, part of your discussion history. Cause before, a couple years ago, you had detached cottage allowances, and then this was, this became the detached cottage allowance. So I, I'd have to look back and see what, how it was for detached cottages and whether those same stipulations applied then, and it was just a conversion.
I think that, that the conversation back then was more about adding an accessory unit to a single-family home.
Yeah, that's what I'm confused with there.
So that, uh, nine hundred square feet, uh, us, normal, uh, most single-family homes are greater than nine hundred square feet.
Right.
You know, an accessory dwelling unit wasn't supposed to be the same size as the primary. And so that's why I'm bringing it up, that it says thirty percent or greater, or the greater of thirty percent are nine hundred square feet. And I'm wondering, because now we've locked in, multifamily properties can do this. So is it really an accessory dwelling unit?
Well, I'm confused about what we're doing here with B and two.
So the accessory dwelling unit allowance, uh, in general, is for thirty percent of, um, the size, the floor area of this, of the house or nine hundred square feet, whichever is, uh, greater. I'm pulling up forty-four twelve, just to double-check my numbers. Yes, 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 yeah. So, uh, I think that's where the, 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 the numbers come from, is from the statutory allowance for single unit dwellings. But I, but I mean, you bring up a good point of, if it's supposed to be accessory, uh, which is incidental and subordinate to the primary structure, then having all of the units be the same size really makes you question whether it's incidental and subordinate to the primary structure. Um, and then Abby's point was on the latter part, so it's all kind of comical. Again, this goes into the next bullet point about allowances for ADUs, um, in, for contexts in which, uh, no change is being made to the structure or to the site. So the, under the, um, B two, uh, it creates that allowance for ADUs that are looking to convert unfinished space into a dwelling unit, to be, uh, without any site changes, to be allowed as a permitted use and approved by me.
So if you had a, a barn or a garage that was bigger than the house or square footage, you can convert that?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure what you're saying, Mike.
Well, what I'm saying is, my understanding, I think the definition of an accessory dwelling unit is something that's subordinate to the primary. And if you've got, you're putting in an accessory dwelling unit that's the same size or larger than the primary unit, is it really an accessory?
So the thirty percent can kick it up to a larger?
No, the nine hundred square feet.
The nine hundred, okay.
Whichever is greater.
The, the, I think the hypothetical you're giving, Mike, if I understand you, is you have a tri, a triplex with three, one-bedroom apartments that are nine hundred square feet. And then you could have equal accessory dwelling unit that is also nine hundred square feet.
I have something radical to propose. What if you just removed the ADU allowance for, for multi-unit structures? Because if you're already, if you're, cause you're considering allowing for multiple principal structures under site plan review, and we already allow for, um, for, um, multi, multi-unit dwellings of up to four units through site plan review, that pretty much allows for an ADU-type building. And it also obviates what Mike is pointing out, that if it's supposed to be accessory, and if it's not significantly smaller in size or scale than the primary structures, then is it really accessory at the end of the day? So why not just call all of them primary? Because we're already going to allow it through the same permitting structure at the end of the day.
So, so limit it to accessory dwellings for a single family?
Yes.
Because, yeah.
Yes.
I, I'm fine with that.
Yes.
Cause you can, because what you're saying is you could put two units in anyway, or up to four units.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
But if it's an existing building and it happens to be larger, you can.
Yeah.
You can use that space.
Yeah. And I think what this captures is that flexibility for property owners that own a duplex that wanna put a unit in the back.
Right.
And so if you, going into, going two steps ahead, if you are ready to move forward with allowing multiple principal structures of up to four units and up to four structures, then you're pretty much allowing this.
I'm like digging deep to remember when we were working on this, um.
You think you're digging.
Yeah. I feel like I'm digging real deep. We talked about ADU in length because we were seeing, um, a lot of people buying up property, renting out the front and building an ADU in the back and renting it or built, or Airbnb-ing it. And we were like, we should be using the ADU by statute. It's an owner-occupied situation and that retains residence and allows them to have extra income to keep them in when you see, which is what was really important to us. Then it was like, the conditional, like, because the detached cottage went away, we lumped it into conditional use, which is what, it looks like you Xed out. And that was for people who bought, bought the front, rented it out and wanted to do that, and like an apartment in the back. They could go through a conditional use process. And I think this is what the C was, that's now B. But you Xed out the conditional use, so I'm like really confused about what.
Okay.
What, yeah.
I need to remember that, Abby.
Let's.
Yeah.
That's how it was.
Um, so let's try to parse this a bit, right? So we have to allow for ADUs for all single unit dwellings, we can't really change anything about.
For all owner-occupied single unit.
Yes, if the owner is living on the property, allow for ADUs. We, like, in a, on a completely parallel track too, we also have rental, short-term rental issues, right? The, the rental issue, frankly, I'm not gonna be too concerned with because we need to boost housing supply for everyone. Uh, we have a housing crisis, we have a housing crunch. And so we need to expand all opportunities possible for, for renters, for rentals and for ownership. On the short-term rental side, the city's done a lot of work to, to curb those effects. So that way, long-term renters, um, can stay in the city and are not being taken away by, uh, by the, by short-term rentals. Uh, so, so we have a short-term rental registry, uh, which is, I think, Thomas, you probably know more than I do. I'm not too familiar with our code of ordinances on short-term rental registries. But I think our cap is at fifty for, for the number of short-term rentals, unless it's owner-occupied, then there's a certain caveatic allowance. But, so we've addressed the, the, the main supply issue, uh, when it comes to short-term rentals, through our short-term rental ordinance. Um, with the, going, so going back to this section as well, the commer, the, the conditional use aspect as drafted only applies to ADUs that are not, uh, conversions of unfinished, uh, parts of buildings, unfinished buildings. Um, and it, so it applies to any ADU that is built, um, to, uh, for, for a duplex or tri, or a triplex. And even with that too, it gets a little problematic, um, just with all the statutory, the historical statutory progressions that have happened with multi-unit dwellings. So first, few years ag, so like few years ago, back in like twenty twenty-one, first, uh, the legislature said that you can't apply character of the area in considering, uh, multi-unit dwellings when it's allowed. that you can't apply character of the area in considering, uh, multi-unit dwellings when it's allowed. And then now they said that multi-rated dwellings have, of up to four units have to be permitted, um, where all single unit dwellings are allowed.
If you have water and sewer.
If you have water and sewer, which we, which.
And if it meets the, the setback in.
Yes.
Okay.
So, in, so we've kind of, so we're kind of in that weird gray area legally, I would say, by s- by requiring conditional use review for multi-unit properties with up to four units in it. Um, and I think one piece that I always, whenever I review this, in order to be legally clear, that I always cut out is the character of the area aspect, just because I know statutorily, that is a problematic. So, what I'm trying to get at is that, in order to circumvent all of that, is to just allow for multi-unit dwellings of up to four units through site plan review, right? Which is allowed by statute. So, we can allow, we can require site plan review for three unit dwellings, for four unit dwellings from residential districts. Um, and then to go beyond that, to allow for more flexibility in size, scale, and massing, and in opportunities, um, what is part of the next part of this discussion, is to allow for multiple principal structures of up to four units or four structures. So that obviates, um, that whole legal gray area aspect of the conditional use review, while also advancing, creating more housing supply, and more housing supply and more creatibles. That's the way I see it.
So back to the ADU. I, I, I like the idea personally of having it for a single family, single family dwellings only, and let the multifamily, two, three, four, whatever, if they want to put another unit in, they gotta go through, I don't, I don't know, an administrative review, if it's, if it's converting unfinished space or a garage or whatnot.
Yeah.
Into a unit, that's, that's a administrative review?
Yeah.
If they, if they want to convert a single family into a two-family, then they have to go through whatever steps.
Call it a duplex, yeah.
Yeah.
Or two to three, call it a triplex.
Yeah. And what would be that process, would it be to the DRB, or would it be site plan, would it be?
Properties with, uh, so, so now that gets into the latter part, right? So, so triplexes and quadplex, so properties with, um, with, any property with multiple principal structures. So that's a house in the front, house in the back, uh, a duplex in the front, house in the back, duplex in the front, duplex in the back, would all require DRB review as site plan review, under the draft regulations.
Unless it's priority housing, and then it's no administrative review?
Only under specific circumstances. So only for properties that are proposing up to four units, and only if half of those units are offered for sale, um, of, uh, affordable at a hundred and twenty percent AMI, uh, and have three more, three or more bedrooms.
Okay. So ADU, how do people feel about ADU?
So if we took away.
If we made it just for a single family.
One, then two, we're saying would still be an owner occupied situation.
Two would be removed. Or actually, no, two would be for, like, yeah, say two for, two for an owner occupied situation, three would be removed. That's correct.
Are we? Are we talking about the former three, which now I think is C?
Okay.
Just a confused.
Sorry, I'm talking about deleting these two. So we'll just strike through, through these two, and we'll keep this, and then we'll add in that owner occupied caveat, uh, under two.
Yes, okay. Deleting these two.
Uh, now, for B, the, if you go up.
Yes.
Up, 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 right there?
Mm-hmm.
We take out, uh, an ADU within or pertinent to A, are we taking out two unit, multifamily unit?
So.
That's what I was just talking about.
Right. So, I think B needs to be revised a little bit, so that way, these permitted projects that aren't providing any changes, uh, to the site can be permitted. But maybe with the caveat that they have to be owner occupied, those properties have to be owner occupied.
Yeah, so, so maybe, yeah, maybe B is, is eliminated, and A is changed to, um, permitted, you add, single family.
Yeah.
Dwelling, something like that.
Or rework it.
Okay.
Make it simpler.
That's the key, make these as simple as you can.
It's a lot of work to make things simple.
It is.
Yeah, I like what Mike said, that's, that's pretty much what we're going for, right?
I think so. Is everyone on board with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that way, the AD, the accessory part is still intact, because that's what we want, we want these buildings, these uses to be accessory.
Yep.
So, John, Matt, Trevor, you're all okay with that? All right.
Okay, good to be here.
Okay.
Good lord, only, only forty minutes into this, and we got through two.
I thought this item would be straightforward.
Well, we, we basically, we covered the allowances for ADUs that are converting unfinished space, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we've done three.
Yep, so.
PUDs, I think, is the next.
That's the big one, right? So, that is the, um, oh, that is the, the change for multiple principal structures to be allowed under, uh, site plan review, so I'll open up four point eighteen, and I think that one clearly lays out that I think we're here. So. Proposed land development.
Four point.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Twenty, page twenty-five at the bottom.
Twenty-five?
At least on the, I printed on.
Okay.
Yeah, next time I can do like page numbers and a table of contents. Yeah. Um, yeah, so, under this, uh, allowance, um, so this shifts, um, the, from the plain unit, so this shifts, uh, the multiple principal structures permitting process to site plan review for, uh, residential uses of up to four dwelling units and up to four principal structures in the residential districts. Um, so, in terms of review criteria, it doesn't change much, i- it only changes the, um, the, the permitting timeline. Uh, and it clarifies that a bit too, that we're talking about, for these types of projects, uh, a meeting with the DRB, and then, um, their approval, and then me to sign off on it. Uh, with PUDs, the way the language is set up, it's, it's a little confusing on whether they're subdivisions or not. Um, so that's part of this cleanup process too, is to clearly establish that PUDs are subdivisions and have to go through the subdivision review process, so multiple hearings, multiple meetings with the DRB. Um, if they are priority housing, they can, they can skip one of the steps in that multiple hearing process. So instead of three meetings with the DRB, only two meetings with the DRB, um, but they have to provide all of their application materials upfront, uh, instead of in sequence like, uh, other PUD projects or subdivision projects have. Um, so, that's part of the incentive process, and then all the incentives have been modified accordingly to this. So that way, it allows for, um, pr- uh, uh, creativity and layout, uh, with this multiple principal structures, uh, shift, so that way, um, the projects that we want to see going forward can be permitted through site plan review.
So I had one very small sort of house cleaning thing on this, which is, and this wasn't in your package, but under our definitions, um, we have a definition for principal structure, but there isn't a definition for multiple principal structures. And the reason I got to that was because I was like, okay, it, it, it's, it's just sort of an odd, um, you know, you've added another kind of term, I guess.
Yeah, and the term multiple principal structures is sort of an oxymoron, right? It, the prin- how do you have, uh, the principle applies.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the principle, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
So I just wondered under our definition section, put that in.
Or maybe, instead of multiple here, or in reference to multiple, maybe I could put in, can include more than one principal structure?
Do you need to put principle in there?
Right.
Uh.
Multiple structures?
That's, yeah, that's kind of like, like, what I'm thinking about is, let's say you have, I don't know, four, two unit buildings that are all the same on one lot or whatever. There's not really any principal structure there, right?
Right.
Mine's principle, yours isn't.
Well, the difference between, the difference, uh, the dichotomy in the, in the regulations are between principal and accessory. So, we don't want to confuse applicants who maybe want to put another shed next to their existing shed, and then be confused like, oh, I now have three sheds, do I have to go get site plan review? Um, when sheds are considered accessory structures. So that's why there's that repeated reference of principal structures, that it's a, it's a building that houses, um, a, a main use, a standalone use, versus a shed that is, um, that had, that depends on the, the primary use for it to have that value.
So it, is it awkward if you said multiple commercial and or residential structures? And maybe that doesn't address what you're saying, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Or, or just write a definition for multiple principles.
Yeah, okay.
You know, then you.
That's probably the simplest thing.
Cause if someone's confused, you go to definition, you go, oh, that's what it means, as opposed to.
Well, no, I don't know, I think I, I, I can see the point of, okay, we do have a definition of principal structures, so I can have more than one of what that is.
Of what that is, yeah.
I, I mean, I, I take the point about, it's sort of odd to, principle implies there's a principal one, but I don't know that you, you couldn't have multiple sort of equally important structures.
Yeah, absolutely.
Principal. What's our prin- definition of principal structure again?
A building or structure which contains the main or principal use of the lot on which said building or structure is located.
Yeah, that could cover, like, if you had four duplexes, but think that would all, you know, like, that they would all meet that definition.
Yeah, there's, there needs to be also a slight revision to that definition too, because it, it says that, uh, multiple principal structures require site plan review and approval, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean, it's not even on your agenda tonight. But, anyway.
I, I definitely appreciate it.
It's just one of those, you know, when I read through it, it just, it was kind of odd, so.
Although it might be, I know there's multiple, this is kind of like a hot thing these days, multiple cities and towns are trying to do a similar thing. They might have like a, a basis for how that's defined, potentially, I'm not sure. But I know a lot of places are trying to do something similar, where they have multiple principal structures.
Yeah.
Maybe they have a way that they figured it out that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I can do some research on that, um, this definition that we have is fairly standard for principal structures, but.
For the princ- maybe the, the multiple.
Yeah.
Structures, maybe there's a way that's, but figured out that it makes sense.
Yeah.
But, just a thought.
So are you thinking you would put a definition of multiple principal structures, or add something to that definition that says there may be more than one principal structure on a lot?
Right, right, cause that, I think that's kind of what.
Yes.
That, what the, the, having a definition for principal structure was about. It was like, we, we want to di- have a dichotomy between a principal structure and accessory.
Yeah.
One, a- and also this idea that we only want one principal structure, which like, I think we're saying, no, not necessarily.
We're gonna allow more, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll, I'll revisit the definition of principal structure, and rework it a bit, just that way captures everything.
So, on this, so, I'm reading this correctly, num- on B, so, in the residential zones, up to four units get site plan approval, five or more goes, uh, is a PUD.
Five or more would be, I think, it, yeah, if it's priority housing, then yes. Um, but five or more isn't, not allow.
Well, it's, it's.
Oh yeah, so five or more, yes, so like, you're talking about like five houses on one lot?
Yeah.
Yes, that would, that would be a.
Or five units on one.
Y- yes.
However.
Yes, 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 all of that, yes.
Yeah, so that's a PUD, less than that is a site plan.
Yes, yes, yes.
And PUD is a little bit more intensive?
Uh, yes, so the review is more rigorous, um, multiple, there'd be multiple meetings with the DRB, um, and the application requirements are, are a lot more thorough. Um, Jen's had a question for a while, um, I think she, she put in a, in the chat, what are, what's considered priority housing first? Jen, did you have any other questions? Sorry to take away your thunder mic.
No, that was it, thank you.
Okay.
Jen, cause I can't really see, and I don't look that much at the, at the screen, just jump in if you want. We're pretty informal here.
Um, but yeah, priority hous- oh, sorry, Jen.
Yeah, I was just saying, thank you, yeah, sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. Uh, so priority housing, um, are a set of incentives that the city has in the zoning to advance the creation of affordable, uh, units with three or more bedrooms, and also affordable, uh, dwellings with three or more bedrooms. Um, to advance this, um, we've included incentives like additional lot coverage, if you have affordable housing, or housing that is family sized, or affordable housing that is family sized. Um, additional density, if you provide for affordable housing that's family sized. Um, and then, in one specific, uh, instance, if you provide housing for sale that is affordable and family sized, then that could be reviewed and approved by me instead of the development review board.
Would give you a lot of power. Okay, anything else on this? Moving right along, clarification within the subdivision review process.
Okay, that was eighteen.
Uh, yeah, so that's part of, uh, the PUD review, it's under six point two, six point three. Um, so, so this would connect PUDs and subdivisions together, that subdivisions are PUD, that PUDs are subdivisions, and go through that process. Um, this would also clarify, um, which projects, uh, can be waived from preliminary, uh, subdivision review. So, this has been a huge question mark for the DRB when reviewing subdivisions. Um, under the current language, they are not sure in which instances they can grant waivers for preliminary subdivision review. So this sets up specific parameters for when they can waive, uh, that process.
What page are you on?
I am on P, page, uh.
Seventy-nine, right?
What section?
Uh, six point two.
So, page seventy-nine, you said?
Nine, nah, I, I don't have all of the pages like you do, but it's under six point two, um.
So let me ask you this, because on, on.
Page seventy-nine, yes.
Yeah. Six point two, uh, E, it says modifications and waivers. And then six point two, where you are.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, K.
Yes.
It says waiver. And I didn't, I didn't tell you, to be honest, I didn't read E to see if it's consistent with K, and why there's two waivers areas in there.
Yeah, that's a great question, um, so.
Yeah, I stay up all night thinking of these questions.
You can do it till lunch.
Um, so that's a, that's also another question for, that the DRB's raised too, is, um, so, under E one, then, the, the modification or waiver of a standard, um, was very unclear on what could be modified or waived. So, applicants have asked them to waive, uh, permit processes, um, such as preliminary subdivision review. Um, and so, this part I tweaked a little bit, so that way it's only from, only. Um, and so this part I tweaked a little bit, so that way it's only from, only a waiver from the standards that are listed under six point two H. Uh, and not a waiver from any processes. And then, uh, the, the waiver under, uh, six point, under, on page seventy-nine. Uh, it only applies to preliminary subdivision review, uh, for that permit process.
Okay.
Why would they wanna waive their review?
It's easier.
The, the preliminary subdivision review?
Hmm, yeah.
It's a bit cumbersome for smaller projects, so like, if you're looking to do a two lot subdivision. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense for you to go through three meetings with the DRB just to draw a line with no changes, no improvements, no buildings being proposed. Um, for, for projects that are, specifically for projects that are smaller in scope, that aren't making any improvements or smaller in scope in which the applicants know exactly what they want, like a house in the back or a duplex in the back. Going through a, that el- elongated process doesn't result in a different product. Um, you're, you're just gonna see the same product three times over the course of six months. Um, so you're not creating new housing supply and you're just adding more to the cost at the end of the day. Um, so that's, that's one, one reason why they would want to, we wanna waive those types of projects forward. Um, is to move, advance the projects that there aren't any municipal impacts or little to no municipal impacts. Um, and the DRB clearly knows what the parameters of the projects are, and the project is pretty minor in scope.
So they'd just be waiving the first of the three meetings?
So they would still have sketch plan, which is an informal, uh, pre-application meeting, uh, with, uh, with the DRB. Uh, and then they would have final plan.
So sketch plan, they come in, DRB looks at it and says, okay, you're gonna wanna do this, 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 or it looks good.
Yeah, exactly, so at sketch plan, they determine whether the waiver should, i- is granted or not.
Could I ask, which is a little bit embarrassing, but it's like subdivision one oh one. So what is subdivision? Does that mean it becomes two different owned piece of property? Or it just means that people are putting two uses on the property?
Not necessarily, it, it really, at its very basic level, it's really just drawing lines in the sand. So somebody wants to just draw a line on their property in order to create two new lots. Um, that, that new piece of property, they could sell it to someone, they could give it to Habitat. They could build another house on it and rent it out and own it as like.
So it does, in a way, it does separate ownership, even though the same owner owns both properties?
Not necessarily, they could just own it all in common ownership and just have, you know, one as a rental and one as a, as their home house.
It creates two separate parcels.
It's multiple, you're, you're creating a new, at least one new.
It's like, this is my lot.
Yeah.
And I go.
And you can sell it.
And you can sell it.
You can sell it, yes.
Four of them, you could sell four of them. Okay, sorry, didn't mean to.
No, it's a, it's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like subdivision colloquially, a lot of times, it's like, it's like a new cul-de-sac or something.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, 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 and here, recently, I've only really reviewed small subdivisions, right? So like two lot subdivisions, someone has a house in the, in the front, they wanna build a house in the back, they put, they draw a line in. So that way they can have that house in the back, maybe sell the front, or create another lot in a, in a, in a, in a similar fashion in order to sell off that lot.
Well, you've got the one on Mossow Street that was in the, the stuff you sent us, creating a separate lot.
Yes, and so for that project, um, at Sketch, we had engineered drawings, we knew exactly what was going to happen. The, the impacts were little to none, they're not creating any new structures. Um, I'm assuming the property owner just wants to sell that lot to someone else and they will build the house. So when that happens, we'll then review the house that's going to be built there, uh, under, with, with the building permit application.
So what's the advantage or disadvantage, I don't know if this is the topic of conversation, but to have a subdivision versus a, you know, for multiple structures? I mean, does, within zoning, does that change radically?
No, in zoning, it doesn't really matter, um, to, i- it matters on the financing side. I think Mike, you might be able to talk more about this, I know that cer- that certain property owners prefer to have a separate lot so that way they can get financing, construction financing for building on that vacant lot, compared to building an additional house on the back.
Essentially creates additional income for them, cause they can sell the lot.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for now, what's a lot in Winooski or anyplace go for, it used to be fifteen grand. Now, not so much, but anyway.
Okay, anyway, I don't want to take too much time on that, but.
I do have a, a, a question that may be a little off topic, but it's related to, uh, six point two F H four A.
Uh, what number?
Page seventy-three.
Just look at the screen now.
It's talking about residential zoning districts, and the fourth line down, um, it's talking about, uh, oh, third line down. Lots and building envelopes shall be sized and located to maintain, maintain consistent building line and streetscape along the road. And to maintain privacy in the rear, and I'm wondering, why not side, you know, from the neighbors, sides too? And, and specifically, I refer to a recently constructed building that has garnered a lot of conversation. So, I mean, we wanna, we want privacy from the rear, but don't we also want to make sure that there's privacy from the neighbors or for the neighbors that don't infringe on, on the neighbors? And I'm just wondering if we can add that language, and, and also I was looking at when we get to landscaping. Isn't there a requirement to, to put landscaping on your side yard? Or if not, there should be fencing or something.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, we can definitely include that into this section for settlement patterns. Um, for the landscaping part, landscaping gets interesting, just because our standards are pretty, uh, I would say are pretty, uh, weak and minor, so it just simply says landscaping, you, you have to have a landscaped yard in the, in the side and rear. It doesn't specify to what degree that should be landscaped.
And to me, I think we should have the privacy rear and side, so that you're protecting the neighbors.
Yep.
This is just, I mean, this section though, it's just descriptive, right? Like, it's not, it doesn't really have force.
No.
So, it's not that I think it's a bad idea, I'm like, I'm just not sure it's gonna do anything. I mean, if you wanna add a landscaping.
Yeah.
And that, I mean, that's what we're gonna be talking about later, right?
Depending on time, right?
Well, later in our project of.
But I would think if it's in here, the intent is privacy from the rear and the side. So that the DRB can look at that and say, well, the intent of the planning commission was.
It doesn't hurt them to have that information.
Right.
Yeah, I would add it.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to add that information, but it also, we also don't wanna mislead the public as well, too. Because with these types of purpose statements, um, they, they really don't have that much regulatory weight. They are to inform the DRB on its decision-making and the public about the intent of the district. But the standards are what are, have the regulatory weight at the end of the day. So, I think that's, that's a balance to consider as well, is, um, how much, uh, language do we wanna put in there? And what is, um, what are we trying to convey with that language?
To me, simply protecting, you know, not infringing on neighbors. Whether, I mean, my neighborhood, our lots are ninety-nine feet deep, so I mean, I'm close to my backyard neighbor and, and I wave to Chris when she's doing the dishes and I'm at the sink. You know, so, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll back it up with actual code, so it doesn't, it's being in the narrative to, it's, I don't see a concept.
So if we go back to six point two, the red section that we started on. Six point two, yeah. The one comment I had was in A two, or A, yeah. A double I, whatever, whichever it is, um, the purpose of subdivision will have little to no impact on municipal, municipal services and the surrounding neighborhood. So what does no impact mean surrounding neighborhood? I mean, I get it with the services. What does that mean?
It's sort of like the Manso would be a good example, where they're just, it's a big lot, she subdivided it, but there's nothing being proposed on it, there's no impact to the neighborhood.
But impact to neighborhood is, seems to be a little bit subjective.
Yeah, exactly, that's what, yeah.
But I think that leaving some subjectivity to the DRB is not necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah.
Did, but I guess the question is, do they need guidance?
I think.
In what we, cause that was what they've been asking for, right?
Yeah, I think for that, um, I think the intent of that is who showed up for the meeting. Um, so for, uh, for Manso, uh, for the sketch, uh, sketch plan meeting, no, no neighbors showed up. Um, for, uh, another subdivision as well, um, that's very similar, two lot subdivision, um, duplex in the front, uh, house in the back. Neighbors did show up, but they mainly just wanted to learn about the project, um, they didn't feel that there was any impact, uh, on the surrounding area by the project. So, uh, I think that, that piece is there on, I think it's a very open and subjective and vague piece that it, it leans on whether, uh, on who shows up and what, and what their concerns are about the proposed subdivision.
Well, I don't know, I think impact is, it's supposed to be an objective term, right? Like, I don't, the impact is the impact regardless of whether neighbors raise, raise it or not. You know, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Does it make sense to throw things in, like, track increased traffic or congestion or?
I would be concerned about defining it and then limiting them to those things by defining it.
I, I mean, the other, if we wanna speak more objectively, we could just remove this, the end of surrounding neighborhood piece. Cause the municipal services aspect covers all infrastructure.
I mean, is this something that you would take back to them and say, does this work for you, this change?
Typically, no.
No.
It just gives them the opportunity that they don't have right now to waive that first review, that's all it's doing.
Right, it's, they don't have, so, yeah, they don't, this is just the standards that allow them to choose to waive a part of the review. Right?
Yeah.
So they don't have to waive it.
They don't have to.
And it's just part of the review.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
I, I would impact the neighborhood in.
Yeah, they, they can, ma- I think what's, what's the worst that happens? Maybe they, they define that too broadly and don't grant the waiver that much.
Yeah.
I don't think that's that big a deal.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments about this? All right, signage, your favorite review.
Uh, my favorite, um, so I've included some, uh, some basic, uh, language. Potential language for signage for us to consider for the public district. Again, it, it matches, very much matches, um, it's the C one, this as a starting point. That you have a, a primary, that you're allowed a primary sign and a secondary sign. Um, the primary sign is forty square feet, secondary sign is fifteen square feet. Um, sign, any sign on, establishment must be eight feet above sidewalk, types of permitted signs. Uh, other permissible signs, uh, and then portable signs. Um, so in essence, this would allow for, say, like, the Myers Pool to have signage for the pool and then signage for this, for the snack bar.
So, question for you, under, uh, four A. You've got primary signs are an establishment, major sign, um, and then you've got afterwards, later down, uh, secondary, to, to, secondary signs used to indicate secondary alter, alternate entrance or egress to a commercialist, to a commercial establishment. Where a public area, I don't know if there's a, if there's a definition of establishment, cause I'm wondering. Park is included here. Right?
Yeah.
So, is there a definition for establishment?
Uh, I don't think so, and a part of me hopes not, because that can get really.
Well, I'm hoping not either, because, I mean, we're talking about public, basically private properties. That includes parks and whatnot, and so, should that be clarified? That you could put a sign up, like, you could put a sign up for the Gilbrook.
Yeah, okay, so maybe just remove commercial?
Well, from the, from the secondary part, from the first, from the first one, primary signage to identify the public facility? I don't know.
Where are we, can you?
We're on four one fourteen.
Wait, which?
Four fourteen.
Four fourteen.
Four fourteen. So we're back up to there, okay, sorry.
What I print out starts on the next page.
And every single one in the lower section.
This is what I printed out, it looks like that. Oh, you know what? Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, it's, uh, yeah, four fourteen.
Four fourteen.
I'm so sorry.
And I'm on like the second to last page.
You've already gone through the whole thing today, I think I took, did I take no too?
The permanent on-pre, premise.
I'm on J four.
So how did the pool get a sign up, if it wasn't here before?
That is a fantastic question.
I think Billy Norfield did it when he was mayor. Jeff Myers, when he was on the city council. You notice I did that before I was involved? And before you too, Tom. So anyway, on that section, just to, to make sure it's clear that it's for parks and wherever.
Because that's what it's supposed to be for, right, just parks and stuff?
Parks and, it could be a building, city hall.
Like city-owned stuff?
Yeah, city hall, well, is there any public that's not city-owned?
Hmm.
Like that school, maybe?
Yeah, the school.
Yeah, well.
I don't think, no, not public, no, yeah, other than the school, yeah.
Anyway.
On, on that subject, what is the public district technically?
Pull up the map.
Map.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's several of them.
Map.
I actually brought the map this time.
I'll be getting punchy now.
I see the P.
You're having too much fun with this.
Yeah.
I have, I have it open there, actually, so there's three.
It's rich, uh.
So Gilbrook, back to the school, and Landry.
Okay. Thomas, you found us.
Okay, and the side, size of the sign was fine, so forty foot square.
So all of Cassavet is in the C one zone? I thought we had talked about changing that, no?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe I haven't won that.
So every time I tried to change that, Mike, you're like, no.
No, don't do it.
Don't change it.
We could change the island, though.
Yeah, can we just like?
Used to have a horse track on that.
Well, we're getting horses back in town.
But then that lady got stuck out there.
Oh, I didn't hear about that.
Yeah.
Did you have to rescue her, Thomas?
Yeah, no, I wasn't married then.
Her screen in her, in her canoe, what else?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, city hall is not in a, it, it's not in a public, okay?
No, it's in Gateway.
Yeah, I, I remember that.
It'll get redeveloped one day.
Well, there was conversation about that.
Yeah. So forty square feet is basically five by eight, more or less, right? It's not that big, I mean, you know, you're changing the shape of it, but.
Yeah, I've talked to Ray, uh, Ray Coffey and Paul Sarn about this, uh, about their thoughts about signage for our parks. And they haven't had a, they don't have anything to change at the moment with our signage. Um, Pa- Paul has this ambitious idea to, to do more, like, more wave-finding planning. Um, but we just have to find the time of day to, to do it and the money, so. So, uh, I think when we get to that point, we'll probably have more discussions about what we want to maybe include in the public district. And also, what signage requirements do we need for our, our public properties?
So here's a really off the wall question, because I'm just thinking about this. Public property, are right of ways considered public? And this refers to zoning, but I, I guess that's just going over the top a little bit too far.
Yeah. Cause, cause right of ways are typically not considered part of any zoning.
Right.
Anywhere.
Yeah.
Um, it's kind of in, it's in the public realm. Uh, whatever signage that we need to put in there, that's allowed, uh, not only in our zoning, but by statute, uh, for, for traffic safety. Um, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't be impacted by our signage regulations unless it's, uh, off site. Um, they are, we can set limits to, to, to size if it's not, uh, like a, in the manual. Yeah, if it's not in the manual of uniform traffic control devices, then we can set size limitations. Um, so, but, and, and they usually follow the size limitations of what's allowed in the district typically.
So this doesn't really help us with Cassavent and Memorial Park?
Yeah, that's gonna be my next segment.
Yeah, and Richards Park, like, this is not applicable to those parks?
No.
And so can they get signs too?
So they can, actually, because the C two allows for signage, uh, the, uh, industrial, uh, industrial district allows for signage.
Does residential?
Residential allows for, for small signs, yeah. Uh, Gateway allows for signs, but in, uh, a very specific way. So Richards Park can't, is not allowed a freestanding sign.
Even though it's residential?
Uh, oh, Richards Park, yes. Yeah, Richards Park's can't, I'm talking about the, sorry, the, the pocket park over here.
Oh, the, with the tank? That park?
No.
With the tank?
No, we're talking about the one right here. It used to be called Smith Park, I don't know if it still is.
Yeah, I always get them mixed up, but Richards Park is a lot of sign, but the small.
No, right there in the corner.
In front of Four Quarters.
Main and West, yeah, in front of Four Quarters.
Or the pump construction.
Where they're, yeah, there's a weird shed or something. Oh, it's gone.
It's turned into a.
That was Sally's, that was Sally's thing. That was Smith Park. They definitely, or president of the P bank, or backup, or whatever it was.
Okay.
The savings bank.
Okay, yeah. But yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, Richards Park is also more interesting, just because of the deed restriction on structures. Um, so signage, freestanding signs would, would fall under that, so.
Yeah, they've got a few, can't golf, those kind of things. All right. I think we're good with signage in the public district. How about the, the undue alignment of affordable housing definition with standards of inclusionary zoning?
I'm hoping to be really quick with this. Um, yeah, so, this is, I, I, I don't wanna, I just want to limit this, uh, review to the top part of five point, uh, fourteen, which is, uh, with affordable housing. Um, it, it, it's currently set for, uh, at a hundred percent AMI. This would shift to best practices for, um, owner occupied housing to be set at a hundred twenty percent AMI and rentals to be set at eighty percent AMI. Um, this would match up with inclusionary housing. This would better align with the rent, with the rents that we do that are in the city on average. Um, so it's, uh, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
That was the twelve hundred?
Yeah, that was the twelve hundred.
Okay.
Page fifty-seven to sixty-two.
Seems fine, I just, I can't remember why we did a hundred, um.
Was it the missing middle?
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, something vaguely is like, I feel like I have a memory, we, we didn't want it to be too low. Basically, because we didn't, we, we wanted to like, not disincentivize development too much. I, I think I, you know, I could obviously be wrong about that, but, um, this matches our inclusionary and organ stuff.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the, the one twenty for owner occupied would get at this idea of like, not wanting it to be too, too low.
Yeah.
So I do have a question. And I'm trying to find the exact section, because as I was reading this. Oh yeah, well, on, on five one four C one A, I think Abby or someone already brought up, you've got twelve hundred percent?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um.
I'll revise it up right now.
I'm sorry, I can't find it now, but it seemed like under the affordable housing, didn't I read that it was, in, in some place here was talking about, um, both owner occupied and in the same paragraph, uh, rental. But now I can't find it, so maybe I was, maybe I was, I was dreaming, I don't know.
So the current, uh, regulations combined them, as owner occupied and rental set at a hundred percent AMI. Uh, this new definition splits it, so owner occupied is at a hundred twenty percent and rental is at eighty percent.
Right. I'll have to find what I was reading. Anyway, that's fine if it's split. I, I was just, my question was, I thought I read where it had both of them in the same paragraph.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out how, how to keep them together. Even with the current definitions, it's like, it kind of jumps a bit. Rents, owner occupied, rents, owner occupied, rents, owner occupied. So in my mind, I was just naturally inclined to swi, to, to split them.
Yeah.
And then what's the edit that you added, um, under subdivision on that same page?
Uh, on the same page?
As well as, do you mind if I come back in two minutes and get my charger?
Oh gosh, yeah.
Like, what was the benefit of adding that to subdivision?
So.
Mike, when, uh, Rebbie comes back with that, Jen has a question.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
There's always hope that'll last.
Sorry. Too ambitious. Yeah, um.
So we have a, we have a question. Jen?
Hi, yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to chat with my partner, I'm just curious when you're talking about the affordable housing. Uh, eighty percent of AMI for renting and a hundred twenty percent for owner occupied. How does that compare to percentages across the state and large in the county? Is it higher, lower, or average?
So eighty, by definition, from HUD, is considered to be the threshold for low income. That's what they, how they would define it as. Uh, and then once you get down to fair market rent and sixty and below, you get into very low income. Uh, how that compares in terms of numbers? Uh, hold on one second.
If I may, this, this might answer your question partially, Jen. The, the AMI is for this metro area is defined by like federal regulations essentially. So, the area median income for the Burlington, South Burlington area would be, I don't know, comparable to Chindon County, I, I would think. Maybe a little bit higher.
Yeah, so, let's see here. I prepared this slide deck for the DRB to help them understand all the differences. And I pulled this table from DHF Bay on rent rates and, uh, and, uh, housing prices. So eighty percent, um, is a, in Chindon, Franklin, Grand Isle counties, as, um, as Brandon noted. Um, that is, uh, set for a three bedroom unit at eighty percent is two, is about two thousand, uh, per month. Um, and then with a, and then a hundred, and then so a three bedroom house, uh, within those three counties, um, at a hundred twenty percent AMI is at four hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred.
Thanks, I was just asking in relationship with, I think there was a comment about, um, you know, wanting it to be, make sure it was still accessible for development and just from a, from an inclusion lens, just thinking about the relationship between development and also accessibility for, for this meeting and housing. And just looking at these numbers, like I know that they're average for now, but this can't, point five percent anybody can afford these. So just wanting to, you know, balance out the need for housing with the need for, for access to housing.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, the numbers really speak in the abstract, but kind of connecting it back to the community. Um, our rents on average are between eighty to a hundred percent AMI, which is actually on the lower end for Chindon County, um, as a whole. Um, so it's, it keeps in line with the, with the affordability. And based on the research Jasmine and I had done, it, it still allows for development to, to go forward. Um, and, um, while also increasing accessibility to, to housing opportunities.
Great, thank you.
Rebbie, I have a question on, um, E incentives. Under planned unit developments, um, what would it be? A, A IV. It says, uh, projects developed on this provision, you get a bonus up to, um, a total lot coverage of not more than sixty-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Then when you go to, um, do, 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 let's see, number four, administrative review. It allows up to seventy-five percent lot coverage. Why is there a difference?
That is an excellent question that I don't have an answer for, because I wasn't here when these regulations were drafted.
That's what you say all the time.
But I think you drafted the administrative review, because that wasn't in here when we, when Eric left.
No. I, I haven't, I haven't touched this until now.
You haven't touched this at all?
Yeah.
How did administrative review fall out of the pod then? Cause we had developed everything around the planned unit development.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I'm wondering the same thing, that's why I brought it up. Why is there a difference? And I don't think, because I remember talking about going to sixty-five percent, but not seventy-five percent.
Yeah, and I don't remember the administrative review piece at all.
Yeah, well, I, I don't either, but that doesn't say anything.
Yeah, you put it out for a long time.
I remember having the conversation.
Yeah.
But what the outcome was, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not either, but.
Did we even ever put it forth?
Well, I guess we must have, it's, it's here. Whether we approved it with our eyes closed or not, that's a different question, but, uh, now, personally, I think it should be sixty-five percent. That was the incentive we gave people, and I don't remember the seventy-five percent lot coverage. Go back to the tapes.
Okay, yeah, I'll go back to the tapes, but I, I mean, uh, you know, speaking in terms of best practices, I think this is a, this is actually a really great section, just because it, it advances the creation of affordable housing supply and housing for sale. Um, so I would, I would keep it, but, um, adjusting the numbers to sixty-five percent, I think would be fine as well.
Yeah, I think they need to be consistent.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, because I don't think you can have one for a PUD approval and one for administrative approval. And actually, actually, if you have different numbers, the PUD should have a greater than the administrative, because that's going through more of a public process.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the sixty-five for the administrative would be better.
Yeah.
So there's also this allowance too, for projects that are, um, all, uh, family sized affordable housing under, um, E one B. That allows for seventy-five percent lot coverage.
Yeah, this, this is what I was remembering when I heard seventy-five was like, I think you gotta do, you gotta do both, right? It's gotta be affordable and three bedroom.
Yeah.
All of it.
Yeah.
And then you can get seventy-five. And we were like, okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I.
Yeah, that's what I remember too, you actually quite a bit to be able to cover that much.
Let's give it a shot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
That's what I remember, I do not remember this seventy-five percent administrative review.
Yeah, the seventy-five is def, it was definitely like, um, connected, just to, it, it had nothing to do with administrative or not. It was, it was all about what, what are you building? That's what it was connected to.
And it was connected to a hundred percent. We were like, wow, if we can get a hundred percent of these to be three bedroom affordable, then yeah, seventy-five percent lots. Like something we're okay with.
I don't think we were thinking about administrative or not administrative.
But this administrative, that's why, Rebbie, I thought you put this, because I don't remember, um, the administrative covers every, every district outside. Like, you don't have to be a PUD. So all you have to do is do four, a fifty percent. And sort of my, what I was trying to talk to Rebbie about before was, in the, in these small lots, like the lot we got on Franklin, like, it was a single family hall, like affordable home, it's like an old home, and it got tore down. And without this, it would have probably been a duplex or a triplex, just because it's like a lot, a small lot, and that's what you can build on it. And, um, we were really targeting, like, trying to combat these like huge studio, expensive studio bedroom apartments or one bedroom apartments, and trying to get developers to consider family sized housing when they're putting in, and affordable housing, when they're putting in these big developments, not really trying to get that person in a little lot to do one more unit. So to give them seventy-five percent and administrative review for maybe getting one more unit out of that lot seems like a lot. Saying lot, lot. So I would say either sixty-five percent maybe would be a way to kind of level that.
Yeah, and the, and the.
Or get rid of administrative review.
Well, I don't know if you get rid of administrative review, but put it sixty-five percent.
Yeah.
And, and, so if. Yeah, because that, as Brennan was saying, that we talked about, if you've got all thirty percent, you go to seventy-five percent, so.
Yeah, well, you need to maintain the incentive to do all three bedroom plus four, right?
Yeah.
Like, there has to be a gap, but otherwise, they're not, you know, they won't do that.
With the lot coverage too, you have to balance out whether you want to allow for more lot coverage or maybe reduce that, that lot coverage limitation, and then reduce some other way that they would, like parking, so that way they can cover more of the, the lot with the building to accommodate the geometry of three, three bedroom units. Uh, which is, I know, a bit of a, of an uneasy compromise to consider. Yeah.
So where, we talked about the seventy-five percent if you've got a hundred percent priority housing.
Mm-hmm.
Where is that in here?
So that is under.
The page before.
Uh, yeah, so under, um, what was it? E one B.
E one B.
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
Yep, seven point seven five right here.
Oh, okay, well, that's for residential V though.
Residential will be eligible for an additional, oh no, this is sorry, density.
Oh, here we go, yeah, under V, I guess it says, total lot coverage not more than seventy-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Projects, please, we do, we're a hundred percent, okay. Yeah, so I think, I think in the administrative review side, drop that to sixty-five percent, because we give the seventy-five percent to the, to the hundred percent priority housing. That's my.
Can I ask a quick question, clarify question?
Absolutely.
Okay, is there, um, sorry, I'm in the dark, I'm motion detector during the layout. And, um, is there a reason, concern about sort of lot coverage, other than just sort of the, having like a differential, um, to provide an incentive? So is there a reason that sixty-five versus seventy-five, or seventy-five versus eighty? Um, is there like a limit that we're trying to cap things at, or is, um?
I think we, when we were talking about this, we wanted to cap it at seventy-five percent and give that just for the hundred percent of, of priority housing. And so that's, I think that- And so that's, I think that's the, the difference between the sixty-five percent and seventy-five percent is just a little bit more incentive if you're going to do all priority housing.
And we have a hundred percent lot coverage in other districts. So it's sort of the way our districts are set up, is we have a hundred percent lot coverage in our like gateways and core and commercial. And then we have RA, RV, and RC, and those set up, are set up to be, RA is the least dense and RC is the most dense. It's like a transitional district. And so the conversation around lot coverage is, we're really talking about for residential districts. And sort of right now, they're fifty percent lot coverage, so how much more lot coverage do you want to get them? And by doing that, what are you asking and making sure it's related?
Which also raises a good question here too, is whether you would want to allow for what's here only in the RC and RV districts. So that way you still maintain that transition element as the core moves outward, instead of in all the, all the residential districts. Because the, the seventy-five percent lot coverage, it allows for that transitional element between a hundred percent lot coverage that's allowed in the C one. Practically really eighty-five percent lot coverage in the gateway, eighty-five to ninety percent lot coverage in the gateway. And then there's no real other transitional aspect to it in terms of density and intensity. So seventy-five would be that immediate next step in between the gateway and the rest of the residential districts. So maybe instead of reducing the standards in this case, maybe it's in the RC district, it's at seventy-five percent. And then it steps down accordingly, so that way you maintain the, the scale and intensity throughout the districts. But it's at an incremental fashion that matches the district and matches the form. If that makes sense.
I think it would make sense to have con, I know you don't like the context sensitivity, that's like all throughout our plan. But I think that that would kind of flow with what we were trying to do with the RA, RV, RC. Which is, ultimately provides that diversity of housing that we're all trying to get at.
Yeah.
So you're saying go to seventy-five in the RC, seventy in the RD?
Sixty-five in the RD.
Oh, sixty-five.
Fifty-five, fifty-five or something.
Yeah, fifty-five isn't really much of an incentive at that point.
Well, those are the biggest lots, so it is, it is something. It's not insignificant.
Depends on the lot.
I don't think of my lot in an RA, fifty-five percent coverage would greatly expand what I currently have there.
You could do like.
Ton everywhere, but it'd be significant if I increase my house by that.
You could do like seventy-five, seventy, sixty, maybe you could do six, up to sixty in the RA.
Yeah.
Again, again, having a hundred percent priority housing as, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because that, because again, part of what we're talking about here is like, you, you, we want there to be an incentive to build the priority housing, right?
Yeah, I think, I think in order for this to work out a little bit better, I think it's, and I mean, we, I only have two, two like, uh, two data points to even refer back to. So it's kind of weird that we're manipulating this already when we haven't really seen that much, that many projects that have taken advantage of this at all. So I, I really, I really, really wouldn't touch it until I have more data points in order to, to see whether it's working or not.
But I would still suggest, because we're talking about the, the incentive here that we were talking about earlier. Was for fifty percent, at least fifty percent affordable.
Right, yeah.
Make that sixty-five percent, both in the administrative review and in the PUD. Right? And if it's a hundred percent, well, it, it can be seventy-five as is in that. Follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because I think you want, you're talking about incentives. There's no incentive for me to build a hundred percent priority housing if I get the same lot coverage if I build fifty percent.
Yeah.
Which we've talked about that before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the carrot has to be a carrot.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then, instead of doing the tiered by district, you just change for C to sixty-five?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yep.
I think that's, that's what, to the extent we understood what we were doing, I think that's closer to what we intended.
Because the administrative review is a big carrot there, and it's not, it doesn't exist anywhere else, so it is.
Folks online, understand what we're talking about? Is it clear?
You don't, it's okay.
With this piece too, there, this is only going to be applicable in very, very limited circumstances. I mean, right now with the Armory as proposed, they're at about sixty percent lot coverage. So if they do, if you scale it down to sixty-five, it's going to work for them. But I think it'll be a question mark in the future of whether other projects that are all affordable, all three, three-plus bedroom units. Would be able to, to be developed at, at sixty-five percent.
But they.
Yeah, but they would, they would get seventy-five.
They would get seventy-five. I'm not even following this properly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, is there a hundred percent affordable three-bedroom?
We want to, I think, le- leaving aside the administrative, not administrative piece. I think what, what is important to us is like, we want, if you're building all priority housing, right? That we, we're okay with the seventy-five percent lot coverage, but we want there to be, that should be like the trophy, right? You shouldn't get seventy-five percent lot coverage if you're not doing that, right? Like you, that, there has to be a delta between that and.
Now I, now I get it, because there isn't, this section isn't really congruent with the other sections. But there's at least some changes to be made to ma- to match it. But at the same time, I'm also curious to see who even takes advantage of this, but that's besides the point.
Well, it's there that they can.
Yeah, they could, Armory could have.
Yeah, so the changes, what was it?
Four D, on section, five point one-four.
Should be sixty-five, not seventy-five.
Yeah, four, four D.
Got that Rebbe?
I think I did.
We'll correct you if you didn't.
Yeah, of course.
You have to remember it.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, given the fact that it's eight, twelve or so, we're running late. You warned me Rebbe, and I didn't believe you. Anyway, let's move on to city updates.
Yeah, yeah, so what do I got? Armory's next week, so I included the public hearing notice in your packets, that way you're aware of it. So that's happening here, six-thirty, join online or come in person. Let's see, what else am I working on? EV charging is almost done, so we're wrapping up that project. Hopefully we're going to be done with that project at the end of the year, at thereabouts. Oh, I totally forgot. I included a whole like planning and zoning update, I think, right? Yeah, so I can actually refer to that. So that is, let me just pull that up. I have actually talking points for once. So in terms of current planning, in addition to what I was talking about. I've, in last year, I issued thirty-nine zoning permits, seventy permits required DRB review. Total amount of housing units permitted were a hundred and sixteen, but.
Rebbe, what was the second number you said?
Uh, seven of the thirty-nine required DRB review.
DRB review.
Yeah. Total number of permits issued for housing units is a hundred and sixteen. Eighty-three of those are for the Winuski Falls Way Housing Project. So as of last week, I've received twenty-seven zoning permit applications. Most of them, vast majority of them have been for administrative, small projects. We've only approved eleven dwelling units at this point, no priority housing or inclusionary housing projects as of yet. The seven of those eleven are for a Main Street project that's under construction right now, at the corner of Main and La Fountain.
They ripped down the house, that house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that house went down quick.
Mm-hmm, yeah, 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 yeah.
They have a big hole.
Yeah.
Up on the hill there.
Yep, yeah.
So yeah, it was one, yeah, that house went down in like an instant.
So fast.
It was really long. Yeah, 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 I was like, did they even get approval for that? Like, this is crazy, yeah.
They did. They got approval by me.
They started digging, they started digging this La Fountain.
Yeah, they closed, yeah, they closed, signed the closing paperwork and just took it down.
Tipped it over, right?
Yeah, no, it was, I mean, it was.
Yeah, it was kind of already tipping, I don't know.
San Diego east with the mudslide.
What are they putting there?
Uh, seven units, so ground floor commercial, seven units above, and one, I think, one unit on the ground floor as well, in the back. It's going to be, from what I'm aware of, the first modular multi-family housing project. So a lot of, so they're actually bringing, yeah, they're bringing the, the housing in boxes pretty much and just stacking them.
No nails, just a little glue.
So has anything been built for sale?
Um, no.
Well, aren't the Franklin Street ones, they must be for sale.
Yeah, they're not completed yet.
Not, right.
Yeah, so the one, so at twelve, two out of the three are for sale. At eight, which they're about to start, two out of the four will be for sale. Yeah, no, not, not really, yeah. Yeah, this, this year's been a lot slower compared to past years, looking at permitting records in terms of how dwelling units permitted.
But this was nice to have. It'd be, I mean, I appreciate getting this information. And to put more on your plate if we can get it, something like that every month, that'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I kind of have like an internal calendar to do this every few months, and then I sometimes lose track, but then it pops up again.
It's like a quarterly type thing, it would be good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, with those, with those metrics, like how many are for sale, and how many are three-plus bedroom, and how many are affordable?
Yeah, yeah.
And knowing what's on the, on the, on the block too, there are, you know, projects that are coming in and.
Yeah, it's projects you have permitted or are in the permitting process would be interesting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so Armory, and then your project, your discussions, other long-range planning projects. So with comp plan update, I've talked to a few commissions already. Next month, I'm going to talk to DRB, Safe, Healthy, Connected, and Included and Belonging. Compile all those notes and come back to you at some point, so we can talk further about the comprehensive plan. And then, as mentioned, EV charging planning is wrapping up. And then info housing campaign, so I'm working, Jasmine and I are working with my colleagues, our colleagues in Essex Junction, Burlington and South Burlington. On a public campaign to inform community members about info housing development opportunities in our city, in the cities. So it's a, it's a basic, what is this and what does this mean? And, and what is, and what can be, what can you do on your property essentially? We're trying to keep it in a, at a very introductory level, plain spoken level. Just to get more information out about the, the housing opportunities that can be built in our cities. As all three cities are a bit ahead of the curve compared to us in terms of residential housing allowances. They allow for multiple principal structures administratively. They allow for multi-unit residential, up to four, four units administratively. But we can still, I think, advertise our priority housing incentives, just because that's something that we have that they don't have. That does allow for, for expanded housing opportunities.
We have, we have just a lot less land to deal, to deal with too.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're in the planning phase, we're going to have a series of events to, to inform community members. And we're going to have events across all four cities. And we're expecting to start that sometime in the spring.
You were going to get us last time some information about how much housing the state was wanting us to try to create.
All the housing targets?
Yeah.
It's on the CCRPC website.
Yep.
Yeah.
If you want to look at it.
Yeah, and I'm going to bring it up again, probably in the, in the next couple of months with the, with the comprehensive plan. Because those housing targets have to be included in our comp plan.
Great. Jen, anything you want to fill us in with?
Say that again?
Anything you want to update us on? If you don't, that's fine.
Yeah, nothing, nothing, uh, nothing very important, so, just some internal conversations, but yeah, thank you.
Thomas, Mr. Mayor?
I don't really have anything, because I just got back from Hawaii yesterday. So I arrived and attended Winuski School District and City Joint Meeting yesterday. Which was, it's always nice to get together with the school board. As you probably imagine, their main focus is keeping up to date and advocating Winuski's position on the legislature's plans. Of new financing and possible redistricting and things like that. They put out a statement today, actually, that I think you can see on their social media. Our plan as a council is to kind of align with what they're saying in, in those terms. And my advocacy in the State House, I plan to try to go to the State House as much as I can this legislative session. To testify and just also to informally talk with legislators who have influence in the, the school, the school redistricting conversation. Outside of just those who represent Winuski. But yeah, not, not much for you all.
Okay, great. I have one thing I want to, I want to bring up. I'm thinking that as we get, as we're delving into this meeting once a month, we come in and we, we kind of rehash things, because we forget stuff. How do people feel about going to two meetings starting in January, until we get through this, until we get to the comprehensive plan? Just so we can get through the stuff we have to get through and have it relatively fresh? You young folks, it'll be fresh in your mind, but relatively fresh. So probably January and February anyway, have two meetings each month, maybe March, hopefully we be over the hump by that time.
I think it would be helpful while we get through this really thick content.
Someone's awful quiet over here.
It's not his favorite.
No, no, I, I mean, I just.
It's just temporary.
No, um, no, it's just like.
You got kid duty.
Yeah, like, yeah, I just have like a two-year-old. I mean, I do a running group on Thursday nights and work is really busy. You know, I, I like once a month at this stage, but.
Who are you kidding? You don't have a run on in January and Friday.
You know, if it's like over twenty. Yeah, um, so I can't, I can't say I'm like super excited about it, but I mean, I'm just, I think I'm comfortable putting this up there now. My, my term is up in June, and I'm thinking that'll probably be it. So sucking it up to do two months.
Before you're gone.
You know, before I go, you know, it's probably doable, so, yeah.
How about you all up on the screen?
Matt, John, Trevor?
I'm pretty busy these days, but I probably could do two a month every single, I would probably miss one or two potentially. But I keep trying to make it, to be honest.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, if you're feeling it's necessary, yeah.
Trevor? I'm hearing a big yes, or an awful lot of quiet.
He's just been muted.
And just to clarify too, we're only thinking about doing it for like January and February, not forever.
Yeah, not forever, just.
So we're adding a couple of, a couple of meetings.
Two more meetings.
Just to kind of get over the hump.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a project that finishes in February, so that's partly why I'm saying that, but.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, how does it work if we can't all be here all the time?
We just need the quorum.
We need a quorum.
Four, three, three of us.
Can we be aware if we don't get, I mean, if we don't get the bulk of us here, that we need to be a little more communicated to the people who weren't here or something like that?
You can see it in the minutes, they're so, you know.
Yeah, there's the minutes, yeah.
Okay, any other business? Okay, any other business from anyone? Rebby's ready to go, look at him. So am I.
Rebby didn't get to chime in, I wonder if he was all right with this.
Kind of like, okay, I don't know if I can keep up, but okay. Do my best.
There you go.
Try to help you actually have to have less on the, you know.
If there's no other business, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So moved by Abby, is there a second? Brendan, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I wouldn't think so. Thanks, everyone. Have a great Thanksgiving.